Excuse me, we reconvene our budget workshop and our first item on this evening is the approval of this afternoon's agenda.
So moved.
Motion to second discussion, hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have our agenda. Brian, we'll turn it to you with our expansion budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Just one thing for you, at your desks, you have an updated sheet on water rates. We had an inadvertent issue on that, and so this is the latest that needs to be in your budget book, and that'll be updated on the web tomorrow. So just make sure you have that. Tonight is the opportunity for you to hear service expansion requests from inside, from departments, and then from outside agencies. Typically, the way this works is, you know, you ask the department heads or the outside agencies who are requesting either additional funding or new funding to come in and explain to you why they're asking for that. Gives you the opportunity to answer some questions or ask some questions and get some answers. You know, as we talked about in our budget, we give you what the continuation budget is, and that's simply doing what you did last year, the same. And this would be new or different or expansions of that budget. With the board's permission, Chief Swain with Sidney Dive Team is here tonight, and he's got a work commitment that someone that he's working nights this week or tonight, and has got somebody who's holding over for him. So if, with the board's permission, if he could go first, then I'll pick up from our side, that way he can go ahead and get out.
Okay.
You ready for me?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
I was getting my coaching session. Thank y'all for letting me come here to speak tonight, and also want to thank all of y'all, all the commissioners and everyone for supporting us over the past years. It's been, you know, an integral part of our organization, as y'all know. I come to you tonight requesting two separate things, and you'll have it, you should have it there with you. One is our regular yearly budget expenses for the past, oh, wow, several years, it's been a while, we'd be getting just a certain amount of $10,000 from y'all. And as you'll see, our expenses have continually gone up. Liability insurance, workers' comp is two of our biggest expenditures. Couple of things have happened. One is, years ago, if a member of the team was actually with another department in the county, their workers' comp covered them with us. They changed that a few years ago, so now, you know, we have to pick up everyone. And the other was the increase, it went from $55 to $85. So what we're requesting is an additional $2,500, that'll put us at 12,500, and that's just basically to cover our expenses on the annual things for the team. Any questions on that part of it?
You can continue to your next item.
All right. The next one, and you look at that, if you look, I got two pictures there with you. Last, not last, well, last year, we went and purchased it. We went to Florida down to Dive Lab and took a week-long training on this. But through Nutra across the river, we obtained a grant of $50,000 to purchase this equipment. And what this is, is it is a complete surface-supplied system. Ozes, rack box, and we have cameras and light system that goes with it. One reason we went with this is because, over the past few years, our team has been put in situations where, if you want to call it recreational diving, but the diving that we do just by individual tanks has pushed our limits because of swift water, as we all know, it's dark, can't see, everybody always asks what you can see, and it's nothing, and debris. And during that, we've always had a communications issue because of how our system was set up. It worked off the sound waves in the water, so if there was any obstruction, we sometimes had some hit and misses in there. Well, this is one way that we have solved that problem. We've taken care of our air situation, and we've taken care of our communication situation. That helps us out on our safety part of it extremely. There's one more integral part of this that we'd like to purchase, and that is the helmets that go with the units that we have. And what they are is, if you look at the picture, you'll see they're the commercial dive helmets, the big hard hats you hear guys talk about. And what that does is, it just gives the diver a more safer environment to operate in because of the masks that we use today. And rough currents, debris and stuff like that, it can hit our mask, pull them off, and that creates an unsafe condition for us. And we're requesting the $25,000 for that, and what that will cover is the purchase of the equipment and to go down there for a, it's be a two-day trip, one to travel down there, next day take the class, and come back. And we're asking for this to complete that system so that, as you can tell, I've been on the team since 1994, and I am not getting any younger. And we have younger guys who are coming on the team, and we want to try to set the footprint there that they'll be able to continue on in the safest manner they can to serve the community here and outside the joining counties that we serve.
The helmet, is that one helmet?
That's two helmets.
Two helmets.
Yes, sir. What it is, is if you see in the picture, there's three rack boxes, what we call, one of them's a spare, but each dive operation we have, we have two divers that dive, one's a primary, one's a safety.
Any questions or comments from other commissioners?
With this equipment, would it help any with the insurance, liability, and workers' comp?
Not with us, no, sir.
I didn't know if having that level of...
No, we're our own special little entity when it comes to liability insurance and that recognition by the state. That become very prevalent when we had to change the truck over to, or we had to get regular tags for a truck, a dive truck, because they don't classify us as a rescue by ourselves.
Commissioner Reddose.
Can you describe your service area and what is the compensation you all receive for the actions you're doing?
Right. Mainly, our area covers eastern North Carolina. We don't really go any further than Pitt County anymore, but Pitt, Craven, Bertie, Proquemans, Dare County, Terrell County, those are our main area that we serve, and Lenore County also. And as far as compensation, typically, what we do is, we get reimbursed for our fuel for the vehicles that we take over there. If we lose any equipment or whatever, we would try to claim that, you know, as some reimbursement. But we've been very fortunate on that, we haven't lost any equipment.
So there's no way that you can get compensated for...
We cannot get, as far as a paid service, no, sir.
Totally volunteer.
Totally volunteer, we cannot.
Any other commissioners?
Could you get by with one helmet?
No, sir.
You have to have them both?
Have to have them both.
Because I know you said you had the other...
You have your primary diver and your safety diver.
You can use, but you can use the system now, you just strapped it to you.
We're using, but we're using with what we call our auga masks, which are full-face masks systems. So the whole idea is that diver gets down there, he's trapped, or, you know, we have to check a car, and something gets hung up, as long as we've got air, that diver's good to go. We can talk to him, we can get some help. So if you're going to have just one diver and a helmet, send the next diver down to full-face masks, it's kind of defeating our purpose of heading towards the safety aspect of it. And I know it's a lot, but the company that we're getting this from, it's what the military uses, FBI, Homeland Security, it's the best unit out, and really, it's not like you go to Walmart and you can find these on the shelves. I mean, it's just, they're not there. We looked.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So we'll start under the general fund side, and the way that we typically have done this, as we go through it, the department heads will present their individual pieces. I don't really get involved in that because that's their opportunity to pitch it to you, and I don't want to, it's the opportunity for them to talk directly to you, and you ask questions directly of them, and so that I don't influence that in any way in my relationship with the board. I let them do that. However, I do pitch to you the overall general ones for the county. So when there are service expansions that relate to the entire county, I will pitch those to you because that is my job. So every year, we bring to you, as we've always talked about, it is a service expansion. We've not ever put that in as a continuation. But the first piece is the COLA. Anita has actually double-checked that, and there was a question about what CPI was, so...
Yes, so traditionally, in the budget book, we show the cost for a 1% COLA and a 2% COLA because historically, that's been the CPI in normal years. Now, we checked it today, and actually, the CPI from April last year to this year is at 4.4%. So didn't think about running a number that high, but you could definitely take the 2% number and pretty much double it, and that would get you your CPI where it actually should be for the past 12 months.
So, and of course, that comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and you can look at that, that's where we pull, and that was the latest for April to April. But typically, we pitch to you 1% and a 2%, you can see those numbers, and that would apply to all general fund employees if you were to choose one of those. Also, typically, if you do that, we would assume you would also do that for the water department employees, and there's a piece of solid waste that covers some of that. So typically, when you say, yes, we want to do one of those, we assume, and you can see later, or you can actually see in there, it talks about which ones, what's for the general fund and what's for the water fund and solid waste fund. So that's the first two. The second one is longevity. You recall that we had conversations with the board during the MAPS study about the three legs of the stool when you're looking at a pay plan, and that is merit, cost of living, and then longevity. The board has looked at the working through the MAPS study to get the 2017 market, and it adjusted some of that, so that was essentially getting to the '17 market study. The board has said to us in general conversations, we're not really, we're not in favor of strictly a merit piece. So what we talked to you about coming back was a modified longevity, because typically, what you see in a longevity is a one-time payment based on number of years of service, whatever that criteria may be. And typically, it's just a one-time payment, usually, most folks that are doing it do it right for, you know, holiday, Christmas time, but it's a one-time payment that doesn't go to base. In our discussions with the consultant that worked with us on the MAPS study, she said one of the ways to do that and kind of help us with our compression issue, because that was the biggest issue we had under our study, was that we've got a lot of compression. And what that means is, we've got folks who've been here for 10 years, and a new person comes in, and they're making the same thing that the person who's been here 10 years has. And that's because we don't have a merit system in place, and COLAs adjust the entire range. So when a COLA hits, the whole range goes up. So in that, you have a lot of people who are packed together, and you try to, you try to have a mechanism where you spread those folks out and deal with that compression. So in talking with the consultant, her suggestion on that was, and I've seen it in other places, that you look at longevity as part of that, and what you can do, and what was proposed here is that any employee, so you would start, if you approved it, you would start this year, and any employee that was employed this year would get a longevity for this year. It's not based on total number of years, it's based on each year you were here. And what it does is, it starts out, depending upon where you are in the grade, in the pay grade itself. So you're at either minimum, you're at mid-grade, or you're, and then there's a maximum in our pay grade, mid, minimum, and max. So what this does is, it tries to push employees a little quicker to midpoint. So you look at where an employee currently is, and if they are below midpoint, then the longevity pay, the longevity increase is 2%, and it goes to your base. So it adjusts the base, and it helps, over the years, helps spread that compression out, so you don't have compression. So the proposal is a 2% increase for longevity each year for someone who is below midpoint. Once you hit midpoint, then it becomes 1%.
Okay.
So that's the proposal on that, it came through. The board will recall that multiple years ago, I think it was '99, the county previously had longevity pay, and that was between 1999 and 2003, and what that did was, it looked at, it equaled a 5% increase for every three years of service. I think, it's my understanding, that was in place for one cycle, and then it was removed in 2003. That was one of the things that was identified in the pay study that said, this is probably something good, it helps you with your recruiting of getting good people and keeping good people. So, and we told you, we were going to bring this back to you, so that's our obligation to you, to show you what that is. Any questions I can answer for you on longevity?
I have one. So what you're saying to me, if I understand you correctly, is that the longevity will start year one?
Yes, sir. So it would be first year, any employee that's employed, if you adopt this proposal, then every employee who works for Beaufort County right now, July 1, if, depending upon where they are in the range, if they are below midpoint, they would get a 2%. If they were above midpoint, they'd get 1%. And that would occur every year they were here, and what that does is, that spreads, that helps with the compression, it spreads folks out so that if you've been here five years and you're below midpoint, then you're 10% into your grade as compared to someone who comes in new, and then they're at the beginning point. So it helps that compression, and it helps spread people out.
So if I could just clarify, so for like a new hire, they would have to work one full year of service before they got their first longevity payment?
That's right.
And more than likely, we would probably do it on anniversary dates. I mean, you know, we'd have to work through the implementation strategies if you adopt it, but I'm thinking we would do that on the employee's anniversary date every year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Next item.
Thank you. So the next one for general, for all county employees, we're proposing that you consider an increase in the 401K contribution, and that would be for non-law enforcement officials. By state law, the local governments are required to provide 5% to law enforcement officers 401K. You are required by law to do that, by statute, you have to do that. So every year, you put in at least 5% for all law enforcement officers. They do not have to contribute anything. Currently, the plan in Beaufort County for general-class employees, not law enforcement class employees, is that the county will match you as a general-class employee up to 2%. So if I put in 1%, the county will put in 1%. If I put in 2%, the county will put in 2%. If I put in 3%, the county puts in 2%. So you only match up to 2%. For law enforcement class folks, you put in 5% by statute, and they don't have to match it, some of them put some in, I don't know what those numbers are, but I'm sure some of them do, but by law, you have to. So what we are proposing is to help equalize that. Since you are required to do it for one class of employee, we're suggesting to you that you do it for all classes of employees, not necessarily an absolute give, by the way, you have to by statute, but what we're saying is, for the other general-class employees, make it a matching system, and take it to 5%. So if I'm a general-class employee right now, I can put in 2, and you'll put in 2, the county put in 2. But under this proposal, if I put in 3, you put it, you'd match me and put in 3. If I put in 4, you'd put in 4. If I put in 5, you'd put in 5. But it would go to a maximum of 5, just like you're doing for law enforcement class folks. That also was a recommendation that came under the MAPS study, because what they also did was, they looked not only at salary grades as it compared to market, but they also looked at benefits across our peers, and said, this is probably something you ought to consider as well, because you're, it helps, it helps us in recruiting and keeping folks, and the number is a little bit lower because you don't pay FICA, it's pre-tax, so the county doesn't pay FICA on those contributions.
Commissioner Reddose.
Is that, that's on a voluntary basis?
It is on a voluntary basis, yes, sir. So you don't have to, but you also don't get anything if you don't.
So you make that available to all employees, and it's their choice whether they want to participate or not in this program?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, now, on the other part of it, if they participate in this program, and the county, they put in 1%, the county put in 1%.
That's correct.
The feds got a penalty for taking it out early. What would be the county penalty if you take out your money early?
Oh, the county doesn't have a penalty for that, I mean, that's something you have to deal with with the laws under 401K. We don't have any control over that, that's all set by federal, IRS.
And I would just like to add, if I may, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Richardson.
Is this self-directed, or is this contracted out with the government?
The 401K that we participate with is through the state of North Carolina, the state group 401K plan. It's through Prudential that the state of North Carolina has, it's called the state 401K plan.
So it's not self-directed, why you've got to have a say over how that money is in there?
They do have a say in it because there are different, there, as I recall, when you, when you start that, and like for mine, they have age adjusted, so it will, you can tell them what my age is, when I want to retire, you tell them, are you an aggressive person, or in your investment strategy, or are you a conservative person? And I think it's called Goal Maker. And what you do is, you tell them what your profile is, and they say, okay, we're going to put you in this client, this number of investments. And then you can say, as I get older and get closer to retirement, they will automatically bump those down and make them safer, not as aggressive, and not as risky. So it is through the state of North Carolina, and Prudential is the provider of that.
That's right, Cliff.
Oh, thank you. Just wanted to state that, not knowing what the contribution level would be for employees, I estimated 5% for everybody, so this is a really probably inflated number here, the 419,000, just because I'm sure all employees wouldn't do the full amount, but not knowing what amount certain employees would do, didn't have a really good way of estimating that, so I went with the highest number that it could possibly end up being.
Good, Brian, you can continue.
Thank you. Last one that I have for you is what we're calling the employee dental insurance. Again, on the 2017 MAPS pay study, they looked at benefits, and they looked at how we compared on our benefit structure as compared to the folks we were being, our peers, and all of the peers that, they looked at, one of the things they did in their benefit package was, they paid employee-only dental. In the county right now, you do provide for employee-only health insurance, and then there's the death benefit that comes through the state, but employees are required to pay for their own dental insurance. So what this does, it takes, you know, the recommendation from the MAPS study that said you probably ought to consider looking at that to help probably equalize your benefits for competitiveness and retention, and what this would do is, it would pay employee-only dental insurance for employees that we have who are covered. So be glad to answer any questions on that.
Questions, comments?
So other than that, I am done with what are service expansions for all general employees, and I think we'll step next to farm services.
Who's here from cooperative extension?
Think you probably moved to DSS, and if Rod comes in, maybe you can pick him up at the end.
Department of Social Services.
So we are coming to you tonight with two requests for service expansion. The first one is our request for a social work supervisor 3 to supervise a unit in our child welfare unit, and I'm going to let Lori talk about why we need that position.
So, good evening, commissioners. This position that we're looking for would be a position that would supervise and oversight a child welfare unit. Currently, our ratio, the state ratio is five workers to one supervisor, which we are over. This person would also conduct family and child team meetings. These are meetings that are held to develop case plans in order for us to keep children in their homes, is also used when we have to remove children. So these meetings are very timely, they take a lot of time, and this supervisor would help do those meetings and take some of the load off some of my other supervisors. The position also will provide more direct one-on-one supervision with our social workers. We know that children are safer when they, if cases are staffed more often. Right now, our caseloads are so high that we feel like this supervisor is needed in order to assure the safety of all the children in Beaufort County. We also have seen an influx in cases, the caseloads are extremely high right now, we have lots of people that do not receive mental health treatment, we have the opioid epidemic going on, which is causing a lot of, our workers have lots of cases, meaning our supervisor simply cannot staff all these cases all the time. So in order to have better outcomes for children, this supervisor is truly needed, because we want the children of Beaufort County to be safe, we want children remaining in their homes as much as they can, and so we would like this supervisor in order to do that. We are also currently under a program development plan, this is a state-mandated thing that was set through the MOU performance measures. This supervisor will allow us to meet more timely goals. Currently, we have a hard time meeting those goals because I simply don't have enough supervisors to staff the number of cases that we have coming into our agency. We also had numerous changes in our child welfare manual that started in May of 2019 that has required just more practice time, which then falls onto our supervisors as And we know it's our responsibility to keep children safe, that's exactly what I want to do. I want all children in Beaufort County to remain safe, and I want them to have great outcomes in life, and I feel like this supervisor is needed in order for us to do that.
And just so you all know, with many positions we have there at DSS, this will be approximately a 50% reimbursement on this position.
In child welfare, how many child welfare employees do you have, not counting supervisors?
So right now, I do know our ratio is over one per supervisor, so that makes me already over the state mandate, they require me to have a whole new supervisor, so I'd have to go back.
I mean, do you have six employees, do you think, or seven?
It's roughly 35 to 39.
No, that's total...
Social workers total, including supervisors.
But I thought you needed a, another supervisor for child welfare?
Correct.
Okay, so in child welfare, how many employees do you have?
So there are 39 social workers, I only have four supervisors. So they're all over, at least by one or two social workers, by the state mandates of five.
And that's all social workers, not just child welfare?
No, no, that's just child welfare, adult services, I'm not...
You have 30-something people working in child welfare?
Between investigations, in-home services, foster care, licensing, adoptions.
Okay, well, who, I'm a little bit lost, who is this new person going to supervise?
So right now, every unit has too many social workers in it, so I need to realistically take social workers out of those units and create a new unit to stay within state mandated guidelines.
I think I got it.
Reducing the size of each unit.
Right, the units are too big.
Commissioner Reddose.
The org chart that we have doesn't break that down. I think it's on page 60 of the book under social. It looks to me like it's lumping them all into, together, whether it's child or...
The org chart that you all have does, I can provide you one that lays out each worker.
I think that'd be helpful.
Can I email that to you all?
Um...
I mean, because nationally, they say it's a whole bunch.
That's right. So, I mean, COVID had a huge effect on Beaufort County DSS. I mean, it did. There was a few, few months in there that we did see a slack period because kids were home and nobody was reporting. Since, people have started moving about, the caseload has doubled since the summer when things were kind of shut down.
So do you think that's just a bubble that's going to go down?
No, so to, I don't know, I don't know if it'll go down due to COVID. Our numbers are kind of tracking about what we normally track throughout the year, if you, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But I do think the cases are harder right now because of some COVID issues, but this supervisor I needed before COVID.
You, you stated that it was 39 social workers.
That's what I'm guessing.
And four supervisors. That's, that's about nine social workers per supervisor.
Oh, my God.
So, and this doesn't, so the chart here is including all social workers across adult services and children's services. But, I mean, if you all will allow, I will email you one that breaks it down between adult services and children's services, so we'll have a clearer picture.
Okay, thank you. The next item.
So the next request that we have is our floor replacement project. Our floor is about 10 to 15 years old there at DSS, and in several areas, it is, there is glue that comes up through the floor. It just requires a great deal of maintenance, and even when it's buffed and waxed and, you know, taking care of it still, that glue is still seeping through. There are several areas that have had to have tiles replaced, and in several areas, it's also disintegrating. I mean, like, just kind of, I mean, there's, I don't know really how to describe it, like little holes in the floor where some of the tiles are just disintegrating. So we are requesting to replace the flooring throughout DSS. We would request that we'd have, like, hard surface flooring in the hallways and lobbies and the high-traffic areas, and then carpet in the offices. However, you know, we are, like I said, it is, it's in pretty bad shape, so we're open to, you know, whatever you all will allow us to do.
Questions from commissioners. Commissioner Depp.
The floor now, is it linoleum tiles?
It is what they call VCT.
You know what that is?
I put in that.
Oh, okay.
I put composition tile.
I don't put composition tile. Okay, thanks. And is that throughout all of the...
So there are some areas that have carpet in them. The director's area has carpet. We do have a couple, our conference room that we were able to put carpet in last year to kind of have a nicer conference room for us on one end of the building. And then there's also a storage area that has some carpet in it. But other than that, that tile runs throughout the hallways, offices, and everywhere.
Has there been asbestos study in that building for the floor?
Not that I am aware of.
Is that a thumbs up?
Okay, thank you.
So I just counted the, oh, see, the number of social workers. It's 20, it is 26 social workers per four supervisors. One over at every unit.
And I can still email you all that organizational chart, so we can still have it for reference.
Thank you.
Now, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to just hit that one with you. Mr. Johnson is, is actually in, on the West Coast visiting his son. But, and I think he, he reached out previously to, to board members to discuss this one. His request is to reclassify his existing economic development specialist position based upon a review of, by the, by our HR consultant. The position, as you'll recall, the position was, was moved last year from essentially an admin assistant position to an, to a economic development specialist position. Since that time, they had an employee in that position. Actually, the employee's last day is actually tomorrow. She is going to a larger market, back closer to home. And so in that, Martin looked at and, and put together some additional responsibilities associated with that, sent it through the HR consultant that we have, and she suggested that it be, that that be reclassed from a 61 to a 63. That roughly equates to about $13,000. What Mr. Johnson is proposing in this is that the, is that the board approve it and use a revenue offset to make it essentially flat or a little bit of a savings. And what he's proposing is, the, the board currently has a contract with what's called the NC East Alliance, and they help market for economic development. They're the group that, that is the eastern counties. And his proposal is that you cease that contract, not re-enter into that contract, and use those funds to offset this cost for this, for this position. So I'm hoping that he had those direct conversations. If you had any questions about that, you may have gotten that from him. But I'm glad to try to answer any, but, but that's what I can tell you.
Questions from commissioners.
Well, you know, this looks to me like ladder-ing up because we just reclassified a year ago, and now we're reclassifying again, and we keep moving this thing up. And I'm against doing away with the contract with NC East Alliance. So, you know.
Any other commissioner? Emergency Service EMS?
Thank you, commissioners, for the ability to come before you and request. I have two requests tonight. The first one is going to be for a system expansion for what is titled by the MAPS group as the EMS paramedic special assignment. I know you have what has been provided for you. I'd like to talk a little bit past that for, for just a, a couple of moments to bring into perspective what this position really would entail. First of all, just a starting point that, that, to set the stage. EMS, as you all know, is a responsibility of the county, and EMS is a costly business. The EMS today that we have compared to where it was is totally changing. It's changing extremely rapidly. For instance, just in certification alone, where it used to be someone would take a, a little bit of a certification and start getting into EMS, they had minimum requirements to keep it going. Now, by the, by the end of next year, you'll have to have an associate's degree to get your paramedic, and by 2025, you'll have to have a bachelor's degree. The state is pushing EMS into a point where they will probably try to get it licensure. So just to let you know, those things are happening. We've talked about it briefly, but all over EMS, it is changing rapidly. Got two slides I want you to look at, and, and they seem kind of busy, and I'll talk through it. When we look at this first slide, I just tried, wanted to put a visual together of some things. If you look at the top line that goes across, you see federal and state, local finance, some county departments, you as the board of commissioners, admin. What I want you to see on that top line is these are all agencies represented that are constantly requesting information, just information, just data, okay? With that, in the federal realm, we have from FEMA, Homeland Security, the, the Department of Transportation is where EMS nationally is actually housed. There's the guidelines that come from them. Under state, of course, we have a lot of interaction with regulations, inspections, expectations, documentations, compliance, all the way down to success rates now. And, and with that, more requests being made more often. Under local governments, that's our other municipal governments, our local governments, are expecting a service, expect answers to their questions and so on. And you as policymakers have asked us, our department, on numerous times, questions. You, you want, you want a dataset of what's going on. And in the past, it has taken us man-hours to get that dataset because we did not have a uniform way of bringing all of that data into one place. We have this through all of those things. And the position I have before you really, in my mind, is about being proactive versus being reactive. And I look at, reactive response creates inefficiency. I like to think of reactive as we're chasing something instead of managing something else. And that comes when something comes up, hey, I need this answer. If we don't have that readily available, we're stopping what we're doing, and we're now chasing that until we get it together. In short, when we're reactive, something is managing us, but when we're proactive, we're managing something else. So if we look at this slide, let me talk first of all, just about requested data. If you look at that top line again, what I want you to see is the main agencies who need something from EMS and emergency services when we look at this. And from now on, I'm going to call that data. It could be all types of information. Information is data. Different data, very different forms. Essentially, groups always want data the way they're used to tracking it. They want it specific to the answer in which they're asking or their agency form. In the center, you see our, our operation, our, our organization specific, those who manage in the, in our department. So that data request comes to us, we go through each other, and then we have to figure out where to go. Data requests in whatever form come to one of our above agencies as a minimum with a need of data to be returned in a specific form in a specific timeframe. The appropriate position represented in our organization has at some point to stop a task that they're doing and figure out where to get this data and so on. You might say, that's what we do in life. What's the big deal? I agree. You get asked a question, you stop and, and you try to put things together. In our world, our data does not match. The systems, the sources are not the same data. I'm not saying they're skewed and they're different data. I'm saying their actual form do not match. And I'm going to give you a few examples as we look at it. So the challenge we're faced with, everything is becoming data-driven, 100% data-driven. For instance, if you ask my opinion on something in EMS, I will quickly get a response after I say my opinion. Show me the data. You want to see the data to back up our opinion. We're getting out of the world of an opinion. We, we want fact. We want to see the data that goes along with it. So everything is becoming data-driven. Second challenge we have for our area and for, for our division is all data sources, again, are in a different form. 911 gives us data in one way. We could, we could, our call systems give us data in a different way. The state gives us data in a different system. Everything comes in different forms. And our third challenge is all data is stored in a different place in those different forms. So we have access issues, permissions, that we have to do and so on. So when I, I look at this, a simple request from you 12 months ago to give me call statistics would take me two days to get you those call statistics if it was outside of just Beaufort County EMS, because I needed to get permission. 911 had to dump their data to us. We had to go to other departments to get PCRs. We then had to take that, figure out how to match it up together, and come to our best report back to you of that data. As again, you can see, totally inefficient. I've spoken about requests for data. Now let me speak just for a moment on operational data.
Not too long, not too long.
I understand. If, if I may, Commissioner Booth, you said when we need it to come ask for it, and I am not up here with fluff. I'm up here because we have a position that we need. It is important. So please, with our respect, and I'll move on. Operate, that's just request. That's the easy, that's the easy piece. The real, where the rubber meets the road is operational data. If you look at, at this chart and you look underneath, that's all the things that we have to deal with on a daily basis, different ones in our divisions, all right? The bottom three lines of this graph represents part of the data source that we have to manage. Again, different data collected in different ways for a specific purpose. When a need arises, I'll give you an example, a truck check. We come up with a form that does a truck check. We start capturing that. We find a place that it sits in as we're developing that and we're coming together. What we found is those old ways of doing that, we drop information. There's times that even though a truck check came back in paper, it went to this one individual who was responsible, something that needed to be fixed may not have got fixed. When I find out about that, I'm upset. I want to get it fixed. I want to get it fixed immediately. Again, everything is becoming data-driven, all data sources are in a different form, and data stored in a different place. So I moved a paramedic in January from shift to 40 hours to assist us with COVID. And this individual did us a great job in assisting with COVID. But this individual also has one of two people I know of in our department, and there may be more, that have the specific skill sets to be able to manage data, to put things together, and so on. So when I moved this individual to do things specific for COVID and to help with COVID response, we talked about some of the other challenges, and he said, let me have a stab at it. And so we did that. And I just want to give you a, a couple of things. First of all, an improvement in simple call statistics. If you ask me today about call statistics that have happened from 2020 up until now, by tonight, I can have those sitting in your email. We, we can give you graphs and everything to go with it. Why? Because he figured a way to take the data from the different places, to group it together into one data spot, and to make it talk to each other. He knows, he knew how to write that program. He knows how to take the data and do that, so we're able to now efficiently move that. Looking at call savings, because we want to know about money. In medical supplies alone, in a short amount of time, we've had to continually ask to come to the board to increase our medical supplies through budget. The price just keeps going up. Right now, in COVID, you can't get enough supply. Price is going through the roof. You have to buy larger quantities. They won't let us buy smaller items. Expiration dates have now been moved from six months to 12 months to two months. We have to use it quick or it goes out of date. Other county agencies are running out of supplies. We assist them in trading and things going on, and we're under back order shortages left and right. We're in a mess. But what happened with this? We took a reactive approach that, that was done with medical supplies. This individual wrote a program. All medical supplies are scanned in now. Ordering is done from a computer program of knowing when it's going. We understand when the expiration dates are taking place. We're able to manage better. You can't look at the number in our budget from this year and, and see what I'm about to tell you unless I explain it to you. If you look at our medical supplies, we were under budget, okay? But under budget with medical supplies, at a time that the medical supplies went through the roof, we should have been over budget, but we were able to maintain and keep it under because we got management of that system, really the data piece, in going. In this temporary position, this gentleman was able to do that. I could go on with examples of maintenance of vehicles and others, but for time, I won't. So slide number two. We're requesting this position because we want to stop being forced to be reactive, and we want to be proactive in our data management. Now, I've just created this visual as this spot, this manifold, where data request and all of our data in every way comes into will be written in a way that as much as possible this data can be used in various locations. So those that are in the operational positions and then access the data, be able to use it efficiently. And this is not all that this position will do. It would be the main points of this position. The reason it says paramedic special assignment is because we still want it to be a paramedic. We want the ability to fill the trucks when we need to. We want the ability to use this person in emergency operations and assist with other things. So I, I say this in closing, there is a real need. We've tested this need over the last six months just slightly, and we see positive results. It makes a difference in our operation, and we can continue being reactive and chasing things, or we can get proactive and we can manage it. So with that, I'll ask for any questions.
The next item.
Okay. Second item. Under the senior EMS paramedic, earlier in, in my career with Beaufort County, we had a situation in another department where we had people all kind of on equal playing fields. And what we were able to do under the policy at that time was create a senior person, same position classification, it didn't change anything, but it gave someone a training supervisory role with a 5% increase at that position. So it kind of gave a step, a training step for that. We've been able to do that in other, other things. When I look at our EMS, listening to, you look at that span of control ratio, the way our shifts are worked out, if you were to look across, we have two QRVs at two locations, and we have three ambulances. Each ambulance has two people on it times four shifts. That's where the 12 people come from. What we want to do is take a paramedic on each of the three ambulances per shift, that's three times four to give us a total of 12. And we want to create what we would call the senior paramedic. It's not changing their pay classification, but simply giving them the beginning responsibility duty, a 5% increase in the current pay class, helps us with... Helps us with accountability and it helps us start training people who can move through the ranks and it gives us a career ladder instead of the thought, I go to work there and there's nothing else for me to do. Any questions on that?
Okay. Thank you. Finance.
Thank you. Y'all want to hear something funny? Carney started one of his sentences with if Anita rises, and I thought he said if Anita rises, and I stood up. So it's, it's kind of like, I did. It's kind of like if I were to marry a man with the last name Walker, my name would be Anita Walker. Anyway, I'm getting serious now. I'm getting serious now. I quite don't understand or know what to call you, whether I should address you as Mr. Vice Chairman or Mr. Chairman tonight since you're serving as Chairman. Sir? Okay, just Commissioner. It's a bit of a Jeopardy question. I'm going to try to do some research and figure out what's appropriate there for the future. So I believe, yes, Melissa has put up a slide for me tonight and just real quick, had an opportunity to put together for you really quickly, the overall savings on the three refinancings. As you know, we're completely done with the lobs. They're closed. It's in the books, all done. The GO bonds are closing on Tuesday, next Tuesday, when we get back from Memorial Weekend. And the USDA loan is scheduled to close on June 10th. But the numbers for the GO bonds, the USDA, they're firm, they're set in stone. So I'm very comfortable with sharing with you the savings on each of those three refinancings. Now this is net of any cost of issuance. If you'll remember, we financed some of the issuance cost on particularly the bonds. Now the USDA piece, we're paying the legal out of pocket, so to speak, or out of the annual operating budget. So that's already been deducted out. So I'm pleased to be able to report that our net savings for all three is $4,337,625. Now I really tell you that for two reasons tonight. The first reason is because I want you to be aware that on June 7th, at your June 7th meeting, I'm going to have several budget amendments where we need to appropriate funds to pay the invoices for the cost of issuance. So that money has come into our bank account at the closings and will come in for the USDA and the GO bonds. I know what those amounts are. I have the invoices in hand. I'm just waiting to pay those once we get past the June 7th meeting and we've appropriated that revenue that's come in to, to be able to pay those vendors for that. The second reason I mention that is because I'm here tonight to ask you to take a very small portion of that $4.3 million, which is $19,747, and reinvest that into the finance department by granting five salary adjustments in the amount of 5%. And I know that's a big ask. I stand up here asking it very boldly though, because I believe that, you know, if we were in the private industry, it would be a much bigger number than that. We've seen over the past year, you know, we, we received some wind, windfall of money for COVID and the board has actually taken action to recognize additional work duties and reward employees by giving them additional payments. And I thought that, you know, with the savings of $4.3 million, I would really like to ask you to take $19,747 of that and reinvest that back into the finance department so I can do five salary adjustments for employees within the department. Now that's not the only reason I'm asking for it. I mentioned that because I provided, I think, a way to pay for it and the money's there to do it. I'm really asking for it because, and I'm on page 191, there has been a substantial change in the work duties in the past three years since our pay study for the finance department. And just to give you a little bit of background, before we adopted the new personnel policy in July of 2019, the county manager had the authority to look at positions and say, yeah, you know, there's been a huge increase in the work and there's been a big change or substantial change in the work duties. But under the new policy, he no longer has that authority. That has to come before the board. And we've seen that come before the board with, you know, the COVID payments that have been issued and the overtime exemption payments for, or the overtime payments for exempt employees. And that's why I'm standing here tonight asking you for it, because that's the new process. I've given you practically almost three full pages of the additional duties since the pay study. I'm happy to briefly go over those. The first one would be the FEMA disaster reimbursements. That was moved from emergency management to the finance department in 2017. And you know, in the past, I did these at the city. You might do one every four or five years. You might have a disaster declared. It's typically a hurricane and, you know, you would need to go through that long process. You see all the bullets here on 191 of what needed to be done to get the money back from the federal government for the cost associated to the city or the county. But times have changed. I don't know, global warming, call it what you want, but I can tell you since I've been here in five years, we've had four. So it's almost an annual event for us. And it's not just hurricanes. The pandemic is actually a federal disaster, been declared a disaster. That is going to be on me and my department to, you know, get that money back for the county from the federal government. So moving on, just tried to demonstrate on page 192, just the increase in the capital project and special revenue funds. They're more than doubled, doubled since 2017. You can see it's gone from 21 to 43. And of course, finance has a huge hand in just monitoring those for compliance. We have to do the reimbursement work to make sure the county gets all their money back. And then also, you know, dealing with the auditors on the audit piece of that. And then I went back and looked at the number of vendor checks we have written over the last four years, the number of payroll checks we've processed. And you could see how it's grown over the years. I would note that last year, 1920, it fell slightly for the vendor checks written, but that's solely COVID. I mean, the economy shut down. You know, we didn't write as many checks in April, May, and June of 2020 because of COVID. There was a supply chain issue and then employees weren't traveling. And then on page 193, just want to talk a little bit about the special projects for the finance department. So if you work in finance, you not only have your normal everyday tasks, you always have a special project. And the reason we do that is because we want to make sure we're always improving internal controls. We want to make sure we're always in compliance with our grantor agreements, our federal state requirements. We want to make sure that we're able to accomplish our workload. And the way we've done that in the past, I think we've been extremely successful in automating processes that have been manual in the past. We have leveraged technology to our benefit. I would have been standing before you so much sooner to ask for a new position than tonight, which I'm going to do next, had we not been able to automate all the processes that we have. And, you know, unfortunately, when you do that kind of work, I, I call it working smarter instead of harder, we're not receiving any benefit of that as the employee. We're not getting any reprieve from that. It seems like we just get to absorb more work. So you could see the list of projects there. It's a short list. It's not all of them. I've listed 20 of the biggest ones, I think. I got tired of typing. So there's a lot more than that. If you want to see the full list, just let me know. So if you turn on page 194, it gives you the breakdown of the cost of the 5% salary adjustments. It is $16,313 in salaries, about $3,000 in benefits, bringing you to the $19,747. And again, I'm proposing that we use a small part of that $4.3 million that you're seeing on the screen there to pay for that and reinvest that in the finance department. Any questions there?
Commissioners, have any questions? Thank you.
Have one more if I may. If we'll backtrack just a couple of pages. You heard the emergency services director, Hedgepath. He talked a lot about all the changes going on in EMS and I can definitely tell you EMS has had a significant impact on the finance department. And I am in need of a full-time position just to handle the, the work related to the EMS districts and the fire districts. And I have those duties listed out here, but I'm just going to read for you real quick. I know, you know, we've got a long night ahead of us, but basically we've got 21 agencies for the fire and the EMS taxing districts. And we do all the budget work for them on the county side as far as estimating their tax revenue, estimating their distributions. We have to maintain spreadsheets on the collections for them. We have to distribute that money to them, one twelfth per month, and then we have to true it up so we make sure we don't overpay them. All those duties you see listed there. And if there's ever a problem with the interface with tax, we have to reach out to the software provider to get all that resolved. And then the other piece is back, yeah, I believe it was July 1, 2018. I'm sure the manager, emergency services director can correct me. We consolidated the billing for EMS transports. It's the county and four other county agencies that participate. And we have a third party that's doing that billing for us. But the finance department of the county has to do a tremendous amount of work related to making sure those payments are accounted for and recorded properly and getting those distributions back to those agencies. And you'll see those duties listed on page 186. There's probably about 15 or 20 of those duties there and I won't go through all that. The way I'm proposing to pay for this is a little different and I want to just talk about that for about two minutes and I'm done. So right now, the county gets to charge the towns, the seven towns, a 2% collection fee on the taxes for getting their taxes, for distributing out to them and reconciling everything for them. So they won't have to do it for themselves. We've never done that for the EMS and the fire districts. I'm proposing that we do do that. I think that's fair. Just, I mean, given the amount of work that we're doing to assist those agencies and get that tax revenue to them, I think it's a totally fair thing to do. Now I will tell you, we have reached out to the school of government, the attorney there to make sure that is legal to do that. My understanding is that as long as the money is used within the district, it's allowable. And I can totally prove that we're using it towards the good of that district. But I do want to let you know that we've not gotten an answer back on that. So we're waiting for that. Wouldn't want to ask you to do something illegal. If they come back and say, no, there's no authority to do that, because remember we're under the Dillon Rule. You have to have specific authority to be able to do it. It can't just say, it doesn't say in the law what you can't do. You have to have the authority to actually do it. So if it comes back that we can't do that, or there's not authority written that we can, you know, I, I would ask that you pay for that out of the general fund, just general fund revenues. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is those firing EMS agencies, they probably have their budgets already for next year. I don't think it's probably fair for them to start at July 1. I would recommend that if I have your support and you do allow me to have this position, that for at least the first year next year, we do pay for that out of general fund. Pay for it out of the 4.3, part of the 4.3 million and then put them on notice and then the following year, institute the 2% fee. And that, that position, actually, when you take the position cost and the revenue that comes in from the agencies doing the 2% fee, it's almost a direct wash. There's $3,400 surplus to the county for doing that. Any questions?
Anita?
Yes, sir.
In the write-up, it says, is recommended that the county charge the 2% fee generating about $60,595 annually on the EMS and fire districts. Is that, which, what are, what are those? I mean, I understand all the fire districts.
Yeah, we can take you to page, I, I got you. Special revenue tab is where we pay them out of. We can look at them right quick because I can't recite them. Carney and Brian can recite them right off the top of their head, but I can't do that. So for EMS, on page 1 to 41.
Right.
In the middle, page 141, we have Bath Township. That money comes to the county because we are providing that service in Bath Township. So I'm not recommending we charge ourselves a fee because that's just money in and out and it's, it's net zero. So if we move on down, we've got Chaco Innity Township. I would propose that they would pay the 2% fee. We have Chaco Innity Municipal. I would propose they pay the 2% fee. Longacre, 2% fee. Washington Township, that is another district. We took it over probably three, four years ago when I first came. And that is our money anyway. It goes back into the general fund. So we don't tax ourselves. We could, but it's a wash. It would be zero. Pantico Township, Pantico Municipal, that money is the, the general funds already. And then of course, like you said, you have the fire tax, which is just above that.
So there, there's a total of six districts there?
That would be taxed.
Three fire and three EMS. Right?
I think I'm getting seven, but maybe six. Yeah, six or seven.
Six or seven. This goes, to me, this goes back to the discussion we had the other night about you're, you're essentially double taxing certain districts, residents of certain districts. And those districts can't raise their rates. You said they were already maxed.
Except Longacre.
Okay.
Correct, manager.
Okay.
They're all at 5 cent, which is the max with the exception of Longacre.
Okay, so they can't raise. So what they have to do would find more efficiencies within.
Honestly, the 2% is the growth that I've seen year over year in the distributions. So I don't know that they need additional tax. It would be a little bit of their growth maybe for one year to pay for services that we provide them.
It, I still think we're double taxing.
I'm waiting to hear back from the UNC School of Government and I will let you know either way. Again, if, I, I do not want to tell you to do anything wrong legally. If it comes back that we can't do it, I would ask that you pay for it out of the 4.3 million savings.
Commissioner Walker. Do you have a high turnover rate in the finance department?
No, not now. There were some adjustments that needed to be made when I first came to get the team in place, but no, we've, we've got a good thing going now. We just keep absorbing more work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it works. Christina?
Good evening, commissioners. First, I'd like to say thank you for leaving me up on the agenda. First item I'd like to speak to you about is on page 389 of your agenda, or excuse me, of your budget book. It's regarding the reclassification of a position that's in facilities maintenance. If you recall, we had an administrative specialist position that has been vacant since May of 2020 due to the retirement of the previous employee. And at that time, there was a hiring freeze that was in place. Since that time, the duties of this position has been absorbed by the utility customer service representative, the maintenance technician, the maintenance supervisor, the deputy public works director, as well as the public works director. While this has been a challenge, we work to do that. Staff has evaluated the duties of that position and because we have been working for the past year and absorbed the positions, or absorbed the duties of that position, working with the maintenance coordinator, excuse me, the new title is maintenance supervisor, we really believe that what is best for this department is to reclassify that position from an administrative specialist position to a maintenance technician. Both of these positions are a grade 61, so the salaries are the same. So again, the exact same salaries or the exact same pay grade. But what this would do is it would go from an administrative position to a technician position. So this would be a person that would be responding to work orders, a person that would be going around on a daily basis. Could be, you know, working on changing light bulbs, working on plumbing issues. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, I think you've been noticing changes as funds, additional funds have been allocated for the facilities department. We've been making great strides in the improvement in the buildings. We've been tracking work orders for the past few years, and the number of work orders at the buildings have continually been increasing. And the amount of work that has been subcontracted out has decreased, and we have been doing more and more work in-house. And by reclassification of this position, we will continue to do even more work in-house. I believe that the response will be even greater. The reason that this is presented in the budget, and I did not bring it to you, is presented as an expansion item, is because it is a change, and again, and what's listed here is an additional cost of $6,330, and that is for additional costs because this is a working position. So there are some costs that are associated just with that, for uniforms, additional tools. Because the person will be driving a vehicle, there will be additional fuel costs, equipment for the truck, maintenance for the vehicle. But what you will note is that I do not include a new vehicle. Oftentimes with this, you would see the cost for a new vehicle. In order to minimize the cost to the county for this position, what I'm planning to do is to utilize a vehicle that would be surplus from the water department to be used for this position until, until one of the future budget years that I will then bring back, perhaps, to get a new vehicle for this position. But again, trying to minimize the fiscal impact at this point in time.
Questions or comments, all commissioners?
Next item is also related to this same topic. Again, I'm the third department head that's standing before you to make a request for adjustments in salaries due to a change in duties for the position. And I think that that's because of, we're looking for a means and a methods in order to review the roles and responsibilities that employees are asked to do, because as we all know, what we're asked to do changes, if not on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, but absolutely on an annual basis. So within the past three years, as Anita said, since the salary study was done, many employees' responsibilities have changed. So since the retirement of the administrative support position, as I said, that her duties have been absorbed by three employees specifically, so I'm asking for an adjustment of salaries for the utility customer service representative, the maintenance technician, as well as the maintenance supervisor, because they do have additional duties that they did not previously have, so I'm asking for additional compensation for those three additional employees.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you.
May I also address the additional expansion items for the water and solid waste at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would refer you to page 405. Manager Alligood, do you need to do the first items, or did you address those with the others?
Just as we talked earlier, it's the same, all of those are the same, as I talked about for general class employees. This will apply to water employees and then solid waste, so you can essentially take out the first. You've already heard the first. One, two, three, four, five.
The last item that's on the list for the water and the expansion items, again, that's on page 405, is for mobile work order software. It's an estimated initial cost of $25,000. This is a one-time license fee and annual maintenance and upgrade for mobile work order software for our Logix program. The Logix program is the program that the customer service side of the house for the water department uses for our billing software. So what the mobile work order software would do, it would allow the customer service agents, when a customer calls in with a work order request, they would be able to enter the work order in the billing software, which is exactly what they do now. However, now they hit print, and they print a piece of paper on a printer, and then it's sent over to the, to our division, to the operations division, or they scan it and email it to our distribution supervisor. So again, it's a paper, a physical piece of paper, and things are going back and forth. What the mobile work order would allow is they would be able to enter it into that, and then our technicians in the field would utilize either a tablet or a cell phone, and they would be able to see the work order directly on their electronic device. And when they are actually at Commissioner Walker's home, and he, looking at his meter or looking at whatever issue, they would be able to say, replace backflow, or leak was on customer side, and they would be able to enter the information in. At that point in time, there would be a date, a date stamp, as well as a timestamp, exactly what time the person was there. And then what I believe that the biggest benefit would be is there is a camera on the tablet or on the phone that they would have, and they would be able to take a picture of whatever the issue would be, and that picture would automatically be attached to the customer's account in Logic. So that's the greatest benefit for that. So all of this would be through the Logic software company, and it's all in one package, and everything would be attached to the same account, and that information would be there.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, how much is it?
In your travels, or your, the water department's travels, do they have trouble with the internet?
It is, it's a challenge. There are some places that it is a challenge. And sometimes what they have to do, they download, we have Wi-Fi at the shop off of Old Bath Highway and at other locations throughout the county, and of course, as you know, most of the major highways in the county have really good internet. And our guys are pretty good about knowing which spots do not have really good internet. If they know that they're going to a place on Highway 32, then they download whatever they need before they get there. We have our ASBILTS, we have a program that we utilize to have the ASBILTS, and they know if they have a work order there, they download it before they get there. But most of the things now, they may be able, they download it beforehand, they get there, they enter it in, but it would not transition back to the Logic server until they come back into range.
So can I put you down for a yes for county-wide internet?
Yes.
Any other commissioner?
And then going to the solid waste is page 413, is the summary of the service expansions for solid waste. Again, the first five items are the same items that Manager Alligood went over previously, so the solid waste is an enterprise fund, is their share of those. The next items, and then actually, the next three items are related to collection site repairs. Those are, as you see, are divided into a Phase 1, a Phase 2, and a Phase 3. As part of our lengthy discussions that we've had the past few months regarding the overall long-term plan for solid waste collection in Beaufort County, it appears to be the pleasure of the board to move towards a large site on the north side of the river, as well as a large site on the south side of the river. So we are in the infancy of planning that. But I believe, what I've heard from the board is that the board does not plan to make any closures of any convenience sites until those sites are open and active. Therefore, understanding that is the pleasure of the board, what we have put together, Deputy Director Olbermann and I, is repairs and improvements to the collection sites. So as you're flipping through the service expansions, the Phase 1 are what we would term the immediate improvements that are needed at the 10 solid waste collection sites operated throughout the county in order to improve the safety, functionality, and appearance. Phase 1 of the collection site plan is to address the following basic items at all 10 of the sites. First item is retaining wall, retaining wall repairs, removing unsafe structures, construct and repair retaining walls, and adding additional fill materials. Approximately $60,000. Installation of railings and bollards. $60,000 entrance and regrading, and addition of new stone to improve drainage instability, $42,000, and gate and fencing repairs. That's approximately $5,000. So that's a total cost of $167,000 for the Phase 1. The next service expansion would be Phase 2, and again, this would be for, this, Phase 2 would address the sites of the five county-owned collection sites. So that would be Cherry Run, Chaco Innity, Landfill Gate, Ransomville, and River Road. So this would be, in addition to what was included in Phase 1, this would be more permanent type improvements, which would include asphalt paving, and of course, in order to get a good stability of your asphalt, you need to have a good base, and it also includes ABC stone, and then for the surrounding areas, clean stone. Phase 3, excuse me, the total of Phase 2 would be an additional $177,000. And then Phase 3, if you chose to do it, would be basically additional improvements for the sites that the county leases, which would be the Aurora site, the Buxton Jones site, the Five Point site, Pantigo, as well as the Yatesville site. And that's additional ABC stone and number five clean stone. That's an additional $123,000. I do have very detailed estimates for all of that. That's not included in your information, but I can certainly give you that, that each site, not that you can see that, but just from the distance, each site, and then there's very detailed breakout for each of the, each of the sites, that has the amount of paving, the amount of stone, clean stone, the amount for the construction entrance, any amount for the retaining wall, the fence repair, the curb and railing, the amount for demolition, select fill with, and bollards, and very detailed estimates for all of that. You have any questions about the repairs? And then the last item for the solid waste expansion is the master planning and the selection of mega sites, so it's a $50,000 just for engineering consulting fees. And again, because of, expansion is for a new or expanded service, and so engineer for selection of a mega site or for the design of a mega site would be a new service, therefore, that's why it's listed as an expansion. One of the items, or one of the items I would like to address is regarding the funding for at least the Phase 1 of the solid waste collection sites. Currently, based upon the tonnage that we have received in fiscal year 2021, we are anticipating approximately 100, somewhere close to $100,000 being transferred back into fund balance for this year. So just keep that in mind. So unless everyone cleans out their garages and their attics and everything over the Memorial Day weekend, hopefully, I will come in a little bit under budget for fiscal year 2021. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What is your overall fund balance?
We do not have a large storm event in 2021, thankfully.
Commissioner Richardson?
I thought that, I thought that that was more or less an enterprise fund. It's an enterprise fund, you don't give money back to the general fund.
Not to the general fund, but each fund, each enterprise fund has its own fund balance.
Yeah, but you said we'd be giving back $100,000.
Back to, back to the enterprise fund balance.
So you'd have, what you're saying is you would have a surplus of $100,000-
Yes, sir.
-that could be used for some of this expense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Redboughs?
What, Anita, do you know what our overall fund balances is, and, right now?
I do, for solid waste. At June 30th, now, this is the audited number for June 30th, 2020. It is $355,813.
And Christina's saying we're adding another $100,000 to that?
Hmm, I estimated 200, but we'll go with 100 and be conservative.
Okay. So the total will be well over $400,000?
Yes.
Now, I've got a question. I'm really confused. If we've got this amount of money as surplus, why aren't we fixing these places? It's an enterprise fund. Why do you need to come to the board to get an appropriation to do what you're already supposed to be doing?
Because there has been, because there was question about whether the convenience sites were still going to stay open.
Okay, so we would have a discussion when we, on Thursday or whenever we take this up, as to strategy and how to go about doing this. You're presenting options for the various sites as to how fast we want to move and how we want to go about doing this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I have no problem. If you tell me we're, that we're keeping the sites open, you give me the money, I'm ready to roll, making the repairs to the retaining wall and making the fixes. It's just there was questions about expending the money at the sites if some of the sites were going to be closed.
I think we can help you with that one.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Axessa Lord?
Let's see if I can be as short and sweet, to the point, as I was the other night. So I basically am standing in front of you for two positions. I've got a whole lot of things I can say, but I'm going to keep it real simple. So the two positions that I'm asking for in expansion budget, one of them is what I'm going to call an exemption specialist. Essentially, the exemption specialist is going to do exemptions. Exemption's got a lot of forms in this county. You have present use value, which is farm, deferments, some exemption stuff in there. You also have everything from religious to elderly to veterans, you have lots of different exemptions. Every county has them. There's state mandated programs that we have folks under, everything, again, from forestry to different things. This county, as I've told the board before, the amount of money involved in that is immense. You're in the high hundreds of millions, if not almost a billion dollars. I would like someone, day in and day out, to worry about the quality control, the intake, the filing, the organization, the every single piece of that that I'm not doing myself. I would like them to be able to work with programs, to let taxpayers know they are programs. I would like also to be able to, again, not to be redundant, but to check those same programs. I feel that is a very direct way to put that. I'll also say this, I stood in front of the board very recently and asked for, I believe it was two meetings ago, the board, I'd asked for a temporary position. I'll speak to that real quick. So I had a little hiccup on that, but I did get the temporary position. I've had someone in that temporary position about a month, give or take, and in that time, we have guaranteed, easily found $25,000 of revenue, easily. And that's an untrained temporary position. Now, that admittedly was going through some areas we knew needed to work. I'm not saying anything other than that. That was very true. We did know this area needed work, but I can tell you years' worth of that, and not only that, we would like to maintain it. We would like to keep going forward. We would not like to have to take a couple of years to look over things. The last piece I'll say on the exemption specialist, when I got here to this county, I was provided a copy of a state study of a audit that the state had done, the Department of Revenue mostly, through the Commissioner of County, Sir, or Commissioner's, I believe, and they had said very clearly in that audit, I believe it was 2019, correct me if I'm wrong, please, they said very clearly in that audit that my department needed two positions. The two positions they said I needed were appraisal-based. The first one I see as this, I see as this exemption position, because they would be appraising property, farm property, forest property. appraising property, farm property, forest property, other properties such. The last piece of that is clearly, clearly that program needs work, and it needs to be a program. Onto the other. The senior appraiser position, they're both laid out pretty clearly, I think I've spoke with you all about these before. That one, I had, did have a question about that, was dragging at me. I'll hopefully finish that up and get to that question. The senior appraiser position, the way I envision it is a supervisory position. Now, both of these have been looked at by MAPS, have been put together by MAPS, the salary recommendations, everything else, they've looked at other counties. I'll go so far as to say, I also put feelers out there for the exemption position, found out how many counties in the state have that and what they pay. The senior appraiser is, to me, a common sense position in several ways. One, we have almost 48,000 parcels in this county. That means my two appraisers have 24,000 each. That's for permits, that's for looking at items, that's for, hopefully, when we get to the revale, helping, looking, reviewing. That would decrease that number. That's another appraiser. That's a working supervisor. It's the way I work, and it's the way anyone under me's work. That's a working supervisor, in which they would have some amount of property they would be responsible for, probably commercial would be my thought. Have this position look at commercial property, review commercial property, take some of that off my other appraisers. That is a little more complex. I've stood in front of you gentlemen and talked about the complexities of apartments and things like that, for different reasons. That would be one piece to that position. The other piece is, of course, that I do want someone to review some of our practices other than myself. I want a second set of eyes. I want someone to look at the real property angles of this. Of all the property values in this county, real property makes up the bulk of it. And yet, I have two employees devoted to real property. I don't think it's anything extra to say that I really feel that is a very advantageous position to bringing revenue back as well, although I will not sit here and say that I can easily spot it, such as I can with exemption position. That's a no-brainer. The money there makes sense. It's programs, is it taxable, should it not be, should it be? That's that simple. But this position, through the training, through the working directly with the other staff, that's where that would come from. Working with sales, working with other items, looking at the quality of what we do on a day-in, day-out basis. Now, I'll leave it with this. One, I was kind of questioned on vehicles. For one of my positions, I did put $20,000, I believe, in here for a vehicle. I'll take what y'all give me. I mean, if it was found somewhere else, or as far as that goes, that was done because I'm new to this, and that's what I was told to do, and that's what I did. I mean, if there's a vehicle somewhere else where my team can use, then so be it. I mean, my guys are very happy, as long as they got air conditioner, the windows are rolling down, usually, at least one of them, they're pretty okay, I mean, as far as that goes. We're not looking for anything high dollar, high anything. The other piece I've been asked about, wanted to address, one of the reasons, of course, the MAPS group come up with these salary implementations, but I think they're fair. And the reason that I think they're fair is, one, my exemption specialist position actually is a little less than what a business personal property appraiser is, something we already have, and some position I'm going to ask to be certified. I think that's fair, it's more than fair. It's right in around that, but it's fair. The other, the senior appraiser, I would like to get someone, if possible, and it says in the write-up, if you read what I've put in here, or worked with MAPS to put in here on the requirements, I would like someone with experience. I would like another appraiser, if possible, to come in here with some experience and have those abilities right off the bat, if I'm lucky enough. I would like that incentive to be able to do that. So I'll admit, I mean, that is a approximately $60-ish thousand base, and the rest is benefits, the rest of the car piece we just talked about. But that's what I feel it's going to take to get somebody in here with that ability. And that's it, any questions?
Questions from Commissioners?
Want to thank the county manager for reminding me where I needed to be. I hope I didn't hold you all up, but we got here, and trust me, I'd rather be here talking about budgets than riding around looking at all the dry crops that we're dealing with right now. But hopefully some rain relief is on the way this weekend, so we'll keep our fingers crossed for that. Asking for two things here as an expansion, as expansion items in our budget this year. The first one, on page 168, I believe, in your book, this is a livestock slash small farms agent position. This is a position that's funded 50% by NCA&amp;T State University, our partner in university in cooperative extension, along with NC State University. They will pay 50% of this position. We will share this position with Martin County. Martin County will pay 30% of the position, so that leaves the remaining 20% for Beaufort County. And I think, as you see in your, in your notebook, that would be $13,600 for the fringe and benefits, salary fringe and benefits, and then $177 for our share of the computer lease for that agent. They would be based in Martin, or this person would be based in Martin County and would work out of Beaufort County two days a week and out of Martin County three days a week. Of course, they'd always be available by phone and email and other, through other avenues of communication. So the driver for this primarily is just, primarily the pandemic has created so much interest in backyard flocks, chickens, I mean, obviously vegetable gardens and things of that nature are growing as well. We've got a horticulture agent who can field those questions and do the educational effort there, but there's a lot of interest in livestock, raising their own animals for, and I'm talking about pigs, cows, goats, I mean, you name it, it's out there. We get questions about how to manage the pastures, how to, food safety issues related to the care for these animals and the butchering of these animals even. And so there's a lot of educational effort to be made, and it surpasses what I am able to do and the rest of the staff is able to do. So I think this position would be a welcome benefit to the county and certainly a big help in terms of what we're trying to do through cooperative extension and our outreach efforts there. The other items would, I guess they're listed individually on page 169, 170, and 171, but they can all be talked about as one. This would be $2,000 per agent, and that would be the ag agent, myself, $2,000 for the family consumer science agent, and $2,000 for the horticulture agent. Now, you guys are already helping us out with program support for our 4-H program, and we're gracious for that. This would be a little bit of money that each of the agents can use to provide infrastructure, whether it's the family consumer science agent purchasing utensils, things for our demonstration kitchen. It could be used by the horticulture agent for expanding our demonstration garden at the office, which is really nice, and it's grown considerably over the last few years. And it just helps us to go out and buy those incidental things that we need from time to time, and it varies from year to year, of course. But that would help us a lot in terms of providing the programming that we're doing here in the county. Are there any questions about any of those? That would be, so that's three, $2,000 per agent position, I think, for $6,000 total. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Questions, any Commissioners?
How bad, how bad is drought right now?
That's a good question. I was talking to a reporter about that today. It's bad, but honestly, if we're going to be dry during the growing season, I'd rather be dry now than a month from now. Now, when we get into pollination for corn, I mean, that's critical, that's the critical period. We can stand some of this, and the dry weather is hurting us a little bit, but we can survive it. It's the heat that we're experiencing yesterday, today, and tomorrow, in the mid-90s, that is getting to a critical level for plant health where we start to lose leaves. We lose leaves, we're starting to spiral, yeah. But if we can, if we just get this rain Saturday...
If you get too much rain, then you got a problem.
Yeah, but we've been down that road a lot here the last five or six years. At this point, we're not going to worry about too much, we just need to get some, I guess. And it was, there was some spotty rains around this afternoon, but if we can, we can get through this, our bigger need is going to be about a month from now for these crops that are going into reproductive growth and putting on here.
You got a 10-degree average temperature drop next week.
That's going to help a lot, too. And, you know, prior to this, we've been really cooler than normal. It's just this last week or so, it's really ramped up, and that coupled with the dry weather is a tough one-two punch.
Been a tough May.
It has been. A lot of irrigation systems have been purchased in the last few years, they're running now, and they're doing the best they can. You see a lot of differences out there by soil types, by crops and the growth stages they're in. It's an interesting time to ride around and look, but hopefully we'll get some relief soon.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a 10-minute break, then we'll start back with the outside agencies.
We'll come back to order. At this time, we will start with our outside agencies. And the first one is Aurora Fossil Museum. Please, three minutes.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I'm hungry. So, good evening. I appreciate you hearing our request tonight and for service expansion. And my name is Cynthia Crane, I'm the Executive Director of the Aurora Fossil Museum in Aurora, North Carolina, and this is my newly-appointed board chairman, elected board chairman, Bill Cook. I just want to keep it real quick. To start out, we want to start out sharing some good news with the, about the museum. We have received a few recognitions this year, 2020 and 2021. We've received a TripAdvisor 2020 Traveler's Choice Award, which is a really, really substantial award to have. We've also just received a Lux Life 2021 Travel and Tourism Award for the Best Nonprofit Science Museum Southeastern Atlantic, United States. That's a regional award. And we just got the nomination and accepted the nomination for the Global 100 Award, which selects 100 organizations and individuals across the globe for substantial service to their communities, and we're the best nonprofit science museum in the United States.
Yes.
No, not bad for Aurora, Beaufort County, huh? And coming up in July through September, Target's going to feature us in a, as a nonprofit for fundraising. So the wheels are turning, we're getting back alive, getting, getting back into the swing of things. So in 2020, of course, we had all that nasty COVID-19 pandemic, and we closed our museum for the sake of our staff and our community's health on March 16th, 2020. During that time, the staff remained completely employed, everybody remained working and paid, and we switched our focus to educating through our virtual platforms and ramped up our virtual programming. We partially reopened this year on March 1st, 2021, and this Saturday, rain or shine, we're doing a grand reopening celebration where we reopen more of the museum. We invite you to come out and share a few day, a few minutes with us and enjoy seeing all the different upgrades and enhancements that we've done since we took advantage of the opportunity of being closed. We revamped some of the museum, fixed a lot of things. So the reason why we're here tonight is, last year, we requested a service expansion to cover and upgrade our security system. And with COVID, everything kind of fell to the wayside with that. But Aurora is identified as a rural socio-economically deprived location, which has a high minority population. We have no town police department. In 2020, during the shutdown, there were multiple break-ins and larcenies in businesses and buildings around the museum, including Town Hall. The Sheriff's Department was called multiple times by myself to have, to have them come out and help with assistance with trespassing, damage, not larceny, but possible burglaries, different things, but we're setting off all of our alarms. And so I'm requesting a new funding proposal for an updated amount of $13,183 to implement the security system that would cover the whole of Main Street, from Town Hall to the library. And this would be a way to add security to not only the museum, but to our visitors and our community. In talking with some of the Beaufort County sheriffs on the different calls that they came out to the museum, I was sharing that this would be a good thing for us to do, and the Sheriff's Department could tap into those external cameras and see what's going on, if there's a call, they can, they can address it more efficiently. They can ask for if they need two cars or one car, because they would be able to see what's going on there and what the need is. So, and also Nutrien, some of the employees offered to volunteer to help install it, which would save us $10,000. So the $13,000 is a small investment for a big return. That's what, so we're thinking. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. I'll just say a couple of quick remarks, namely, this lady's done a heck of a job. COVID crushed us. She's kept that museum going. Not only going, but it's doing okay. She's selling dirt to people. Selling dirt in big boxes. She's doing great. And she's just a brilliant lady, we're lucky to have her. And I point out to you, this security system is not just gilding the lily. This is something that would really help Aurora. Aurora, as you know, is not the most affluent place to be, and this would be something that would help those folks a lot. The security down there is zip. Zip, nothing, nada. And this system will help a lot in that regard. We've talked to the sheriff about it, and they're happy with these changes, they would be a big help to them.
Okay, thank you.
And the museum would assume the electric costs, the different costs with managing the system. So we would still continue to have an investment in it to keep it going. Thank you. Am I short, right?
Citizens on the South Side.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Calhoun. I'm the Assistant to the Executive Director of Course, Citizens of South Side Together. And we're proposing a walk-in trail for our community center in the park. It's normally a youth center, but 45% of our base is seniors, and they would benefit more from that. The course of the trail will be $2,500. It would go around the perimeter of the park. It would be about three-quarters of an acre, and it'll primarily be crush-and-run rock that we would spread out. And when we maintain the park, cutting the grass and et cetera, we would de-weed it and keep it maintained for the seniors to walk on.
Anything for any Commissioners?
Where's that going to be located?
This is Steely Town Road, Highway 33. It's the community center for Citizens of South Side Together.
How long would the walk be?
It's about three-quarters of a mile.
Three-quarters of a mile.
Yeah, I'm sorry, three-quarters of an acre. It goes around the inner perimeter of the park.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that one. Mr. Finlayson was not available to be here tonight. You have a presentation they put together, you have that package on your desk. As you recall, they are the group that we are associated with, a member of, that works to improve and push the projects from 7, on 17, on US 17, to, and it also took on 64, the piece from Raleigh up into Virginia. Their efforts are to try and help move those projects along and get it so that you can drive from Virginia to South Carolina on 17 on a four-lane road. I think they are requesting an additional $5,000 above what you currently fund them on their membership.
Thank you. Partnership for the Sounds.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Woolard, I'm with the Partnership for the Sounds, and we operate the North Carolina Estuaryum here in Washington. We are in our 24th year of operation at the Estuaryum. We welcome over 350,000 visitors for a tour of the museum, a program, a rental, or for the... a program, a rental, or for the always popular river roving trip. We feel confident that the knowledge we've provided about the importance of the Estuary has made a lasting positive impact on thousands of people to become good stewards of our natural resources and for thousands of students to be interested in careers in science. Visitors have come from all 50 states and over 50 countries. And even with our limited operating hours this year, we welcome guests from India, the Virgin Islands, the United Arab Emirates, and 34 of our good old American states. We also feel confident that this visitation makes a wonderful positive impact on our local economy. But as every business here and organization could report, COVID-19 restrictions significantly impacted our operations and our visitation and certainly our revenue for 2020 and the first half of 2021. Our saddest statistic might be that we had no on-site school groups visit for the year 2020 as compared to 2019. We had 64 different school groups visiting. But they are resuming. Earlier this month, we had the entire kindergarten grade, Eastern Elementary in Beaufort County visit for 150 little excited kindergartens there for over three days. And we have groups scheduled now, and lots of rentals already scheduled. In fact, we want the rain for Saturday, but we have a outdoor wedding and reception planned for Saturday afternoon. When the Estuaryum closed by executive order in March of 2020, we did not reopen until September. And then it was at limited capacity and hours. For us, that specifically meant that we lost our busiest season, which was April through August. So, that was no visitation and no revenue. The silver lining of this COVID cloud might be that the staff had time and availability to perform much-needed system evaluations and building and cleaning and repairs, kind of like Cindy alluded to, that it gave the staff time to do things that we'd been putting off, I just didn't have the ability to do before. And as you would expect, in a building that's 24 years old, on the waterfront, and that has thousands of people coming in and out every year for 24 years, maintenance is a large issue. Our funding request addresses some of those pressing needs, which are for operational integrity and for safety, those being replacing cracked storefront windows, painting some rusted girders, repairing and/or replacing gutters, pressure washing the building, and restoring the front driveway area, which is also a safety issue. And it also includes some new IT equipment and software for two exhibits. In the exhibit hall, we are now borrowing some equipment from WNCT TV. And there's another exhibit that requires day-to-day attention because it's operating on a 2007 operating system. So, that's a review of our request. We've been operating successfully for 24 years and hope to have another 24 years. And on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Partnership, we appreciate your attention and your consideration and your support for the Estuaryum for all these 24 years. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from any Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth's House.
They're not here. They had conflicts.
Town of Chaco Unity. Food Bank of the Albemore. BHM Library.
Good evening, Commissioners. I know we've all had a pretty good, long night already, so I'll make it pretty brief. I do not want to forget first to say a really big thank you to the County Public Works Department. As you know, we leased the building at the corner of the old courthouse. And they did some really nice refurbishments there while we had to be shut down anyways. The timing was perfect, you know, unfortunate situation. But they were able to get in there and get a new paint and carpet in that building. And even, you know, saved everybody a lot of money by building a new desk where you walk in the door. So, we had a situation there, whether you walked in the front or the back, you never saw a human being. And we were able to move the front desk, public service desk of that building, to where you walk in the front door. So, everybody, and then we decided to close up the back doors. Everybody that walks in the door now now sees a friendly face as soon as they walk in. So, it's a huge improvement. And we've gotten dozens and dozens of comments. And we make sure that we brag on your department every single time we do. That wouldn't have happened without them. BHM Regional Library. As you know, we operate four libraries in Beaufort County. We're in Aurora, Bath, Bellhaven, and we do operate a smaller public operation in the city of Washington as well. We are asking for a very modest increase this year of $2,721, which represents about 1 and 1/4%. We have not been able to give any cost of living raises to those employees in quite a while. And, you know, at the lower end of our library clerk positions, a lot of our employees are part-time. At the lower end of those positions, you know, we're starting to fall behind a lot of retail establishments, actually. And we are seeing an uptick in turnover, especially at our lower-end positions that are just leaving us for retail. So, that's about all I've got, unless you've got questions.
Questions from any Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Eagles Wings.
Jackalman, good evening. I'm Anne Marie Montague. I'm the Executive Director of Eagles Wings Food Pantry. I've been there seven years. But Eagles Wings has been here in Beaufort County. We're in our 32nd year. We're very proud of the fact that Beaufort County cares enough to take care of its friends and neighbors right here, because we do not get state and federal funding. The county has recently, within the past just few years, has contributed to our annual budget, and we appreciate that very much. The proposal that we sent to you this year was not for the backpack program, but was for our satellite program. You had the gentleman here from COST a few minutes ago talking to you. COST was one of our success stories with our satellite program. We started a pop-up satellite program about three and a half years ago, where we actually took our vans with food and our computers with a hotspot, because you can't always get Wi-Fi, and started serving people that could not get to Washington. Beaufort County is an interesting geographical county, isn't it, gentlemen? It's the north and the south. You know, I'm a Yankee. I understand that. But, you know, within the same county, we have north and south. So, our pop-up satellite operations, our pantries, were designed to reach into communities that had severe need, but without the means to get to us. The COST program, the COST people, Citizens on the South Side Together, was one of our locations. And as of about eight months ago, they are now a freestanding, independent pantry under the auspices of the Food Bank of the Albemore. They worked with us there. They supplied a lot of the labor for us. They worked with us. They said, gee, we want to become our own pantry. So, to me, that's a success story of a community taking care of itself and, you know, developing itself and its own resources. So, we still have three satellite pantries. When we were at about the 75 family mark for those three pantries, and I did a cost analysis, we were running between $35,000 and $38,000. We are now up to serving almost 90 families. So, the need is out there for people who can't get to us, but we are endeavoring to get to them. Bats does not do it. I've heard Brian say how wonderful Bats was, and it's great for the Medicare people. But if you're living in the Aurora Edward area, it's $25 round trip. And people, when you're living on $900 a month, that $25 is a very high percentage of your monthly income to come to Washington one time. So, you know, this is necessary. You know, we're talking about an area that's a food desert. There are no grocery stores. They tell us, we bring the only fresh produce they get all month long. So, that's how important this is. You can't have, you can't expect people to be healthy. You can't expect them to be able to live within diabetic and low-sodium diets when they can't get healthy food products. So, that's what we bring to them. And that's what we're asking you to help us support with your effort and our efforts together. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from Commissioners. Hearing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Open Door Community Center.
Good evening. And on behalf of Open Door Community Center, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Martian Orwood. I'm the Executive Director. As some of you may know, the center opened on January 22nd, 2019, providing homeless women and their children in Beaufort County with a safe, temporary place to live while getting their lives back on track. Before the center opened, there was not a shelter for general population homeless women and their children in Beaufort County. Between January 2019 and April 2021, 27 women and 17 children have moved from the center into their new long-term stable living arrangement. They stayed in the center about an average of two and a half months. The COVID-19 pandemic did suspend our operations between March and June of last year. The center is located in a renovated medical office building on Cowell Farm Road. Startup funding was obtained through a combination of fundraising, grants, and donations, including $5,000 contributed by the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners in 2018, and we do thank you for that. All renovations were performed by volunteers, and the building's mortgage was paid off in the first year of operation. While there is no charge to stay at the center, the women are responsible for meeting their own needs for items such as meals, personal care items, clothing, et cetera. Ongoing fundraising is necessary to cover the building-related and staffing costs. Women come to the center from a wide variety of living situations. Some so far surf with family members or friends as best they can. Others have been living in their car. While living in the center, each woman works closely with our case manager to set up an action plan, which guides her to resources she needs to then transition into long-term stable housing. Goals of the individual action plan may include finding a job, working toward a degree, attending counseling, receiving medical care. Each woman meets weekly with the case manager, who provides information, answers questions, and gives guidance as they meet the goals. In each case, being in the center provides the women with an opportunity to improve their lives and ultimately give back to the community. Recently, a woman who stayed in the center moved into her new home and was then able to reunite with her young daughter. Another woman came to the center estranged from her family. Through the center's program, she received the help she needed, found a job, moved into an apartment, and is now reunited with her family. The center has experienced a decrease in donations since the onset of COVID and seeks support from Beaufort County to continue serving those who have or will become homeless. With an anticipated increase in evictions when the COVID eviction auditorium expires, the need to provide shelter for the homeless will continue to rise. Funding from Beaufort County, coupled with other fundraising avenues, will strengthen the center's ability to meet this critical ongoing need. Thank you for your consideration of this request. And are there any questions?
Questions from Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pantego Academy History Museum.
Hi, thank you for letting me come and present part of our needs to you today. My name is Martha Boehner. And at the Academy Museum, we have just volunteer. We don't have any paid employees. And Pantego Academy was established in 1874, and it was the only male and female conscription, and that is paid for by the subject in eastern North Carolina. It is listed on the registry for historical places. It's the only building in existence with a horseshoe staircase. There was one more, but it is no longer in existence. And if you haven't been, you need to come. Pantego, what used to be a growing town, and our membership is trying hard to preserve the history of the area, not just Pantego, but the area all around here. Now, our membership, our dues, our member dues, and moral gifts, and fundraisers is where we get our income from. And we were not able to have fundraisers last year, because we did close in March, and we didn't open until this April. And we did have a small fish fry the last of April, and Commissioner Waters did attend to that. And he made the statement that whatever Commissioner Richardson would donate, he would match. So, we'll see. Now, a professional photographer took the pictures in this book. I'm sure he hoped to get a good job, but we didn't hire him. But he gave this book. And I would like for you all to look at it. It's quick. It shows you what it looks like on the inside of the museum. I was working on a PowerPoint, but I didn't have time to finish it with what I do at home. Now, like all tourists, local people don't visit, but other people do. Last week, I got a call from a lady in Florida, and she wanted a special appointment to come and see the museum. And she was there three hours, and I really enjoyed every minute of it. I am the hostess or guide at the museum when you come. And this past weekend, we had a couple from Missouri to come and visit. In 2019, we had four first graders, first grade classes, to come and visit. And we have the Pantego jail on our property and also George Old's lumber office. And the first graders liked the jail, because they liked having their pictures taken there. Now, we are open 2 to 4 every Saturday and Sunday, and by appointment, if you would like to go any other time. Two years ago, we purchased a heat pump for the front of the building. It has saved us several thousand dollars in heating for the last two years. We heat with space gas heaters and cool with room air conditioners. But the two back rooms that we're interested in putting heat and air units in don't have anything. And we would like to request $10,000, because we have two large rooms on the back of the academy that has priceless pictures, military uniforms, sports uniforms of past generations, ledgers, books, quilts, clothing, and a lot of certain things that pertain to the history of when the school was in operation. These rooms really need it badly, because they're damp, everything in it, and the things are deteriorating rapidly. And if we want to preserve what we've got for history's sake, and I'm sure you all know our history is, for everything is getting away from us. So, we're trying to preserve the history of the area. And it is all Pantego has. I know Aurora has a fossil museum, but the Academy Historical Museum is what we have. And right now, we have a whole lot of stuff in it. So, if it would be good enough to help us out, to preserve the history of the area for future generations. We also got a proposal, and it was $5,000 a unit. For the two units, would make it $10,000. We would certainly appreciate your help.
Questions from Commissioners?
Have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Head of our last one for this evening, so we will recess until Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
I have one thing that I would like to bring up if you're getting ready to recess.
Okay.
Well, the next meeting, we have a schedule of a chart of accounts. Let me go down through the lowest level.
Okay. Now, when you say chart of accounts, that is just a listing of account numbers. I'm assuming you want some kind of balances with them?
Well, the chart of accounts and a description of some of those accounts, so the Commissioners can see how the chart of accounts works.
Okay.
Those I intend to make a motion for transfers within budgets and using that chart of accounts.
Okay. Sure.
We will recess till Tuesday at 7:00 PM.